Ladies and gentlemen, let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening with the exception of councilman Fairbanks. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on November 21st, 2022 as on file in the city clerk's office. Mr. McLean?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda would be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by McLean and seconded by Morgan, that the minutes of November 21st be approved. Your vote, please. That is approved, 7-0. Next is the receipt of the election certification. Mr. McLean?
I move that the certificates of election of the November 8th, 2022 general election as certified by the county clerk be received and placed on file.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the certification of election of November 8th, 2022 be certified by the county clerk be received and placed on file. Your vote, please. And that is approved, 7-0. Next, approve council member public official bonds.
I move that the following public officials' bonds be received and placed on file: Mayor Robert D. Morgan, RLI Insurance; Councilmembers Terry Doyle, RLI Insurance; Dave Escri, State Farm Fire and Casualty Company; Michael McLean, Western Certi Company; and Duane Rue, Western Certi Company.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Fraylin, that the insurance certification is approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved, 7-0. We are at that point where we are going to make a transition, and prior to doing that, I just have a few prepared comments that I would like to read and convey to everyone. Last eight years has been, to me, a rewarding experience, and I would like to thank the citizens of Beatrice for allowing me that opportunity to serve in this capacity. The staff in our city, from Public Works to our city administrator, city attorney, and all volunteer boards, has my enduring respect and gratitude. To be sure, elected officials, even in small communities, only get things done with the help from a lot of staff. They go above and beyond. I see staff attending and working community events. I see Public Works crews late night into the predawn hours during storms. I have met with department heads on numerous occasions and witnessed the true dedication they display for what they do in our community. Hopefully, my involvement has made a positive difference. I know full well I did nothing alone, but rather as part of a team. I have been honored to serve with dedicated and energetic elected officials, and I have been privileged to be associated with dynamic and forward-thinking council members. Among the bits of down-home philosophy attributed to Abraham Lincoln, one of my favorites is that people are as happy as they make up their minds to be. It doesn't mean that we live in a constant state of euphoria, but rather it tells us that all of us are our own architects of our own happiness and despair. You know, there are no issues important enough to pit neighbors against one another. There are no ideas not worth a civil debate, and there's no challenge that cannot be met without or with mutual understanding and with consideration. And with that, I will relinquish the chair and relinquish the gavel, but we'll go ahead. And I think Mike McLean, you're on board next.
I have a few plaques I'd like to give out to the members of the council that are leaving.
Do you want to just come up there?
I think she wanted to go up there so she could get a picture.
Okay.
Bill Billsbuck. He chose to black for your service on the city council for two terms. A pleasure working with you, and he does want to feature. Appreciate it. Thank you. Rick Claybaugh?
I don't know what's next.
Rick, thanks for 10 years of service in the Beatty City Council. A pleasure working with you also. Mr. Morgan?
Gets a plaque before he gets to sit here. What is this?
Claybaugh, thank you for your service on the city council, and best of luck in your new role as mayor.
See you.
See you.
Stan, thank you for being mayor. Last two terms, a pleasure working with you, and best of luck in future.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Geez, Danny hasn't even swore in, and he's taking your chair.
Oh, that's right.
You didn't leave your wallet.
He just left signed checks.
Yep, come up, Duane. Come up, Terry.
Swear you in down there.
Come on down, Duane.
I have to get sworn in again, too, don't I?
Yes, you do. If I had to, then.
It's part of the procedure.
I remember my first day.
Just have you raise your right hand and read that aloud once.
Together?
Yep, together.
I swear, I'm Michael McLean. I just want to swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Nebraska against all enemies, foreign, and domestic. That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same. That I will take this obligation freely and without any reservation or for the purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform my duties as the officer of the city councilman according to law and to the best of my ability. And I will defer to swear that I do not advocate, nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence, and that during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. So help me God.
Okay, you guys want to open?
Yep.
Sorry, I haven't got around to calling you yet.
To the council.
I just want to talk about our award.
You can start raising now.
Give me insight into what I'm missing here.
We're ready to convene December 5th council meeting. All members of the council are present except for Dave Escri and councilman Fairbanks. I would like to quickly thank Mayor and Mr. Billsbuck and Rick Claybaugh for their years of service. It's been an interesting ride for the last eight years, and I look forward to exciting four more years. So with that, we will do the, I'll ask for nominations for the council president.
You guys, Ted Fairbanks wanted to make this motion, but he's gone. His mom has got something going on, so he's gone, and he called last night and asked if I'd make a motion. So I'd like to move that the nominations for council president cease, and that the name of Michael McLean be voted on by written ballot.
Second. All those in favor?
We should only have six. Who else is on?
We've got to take Billsbuck, or no?
Motion passes. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
Move on to the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion for these items unless a councilman so requests. A, approve agenda as submitted. B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, we've already approved. E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $184,187.66. Approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $27,632.17. Approve the final pay request in the amount of $92,233.30 for the Beatrice Fire Station project to Hampton Commercial Construction. Resolution number 6973, executing the year-end certification of the city's street superintendent form. And item I, resolution number 6974, appointing Jason Moore as the city's certified city street superintendent. Right? Anybody want thing pulled off? All right, seeing none. Mr. McLean?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and /or ratified as presented.
Second. Okay, your vote, please. Oh, well, first discussion? No, sorry. First meeting. Your vote, please. Motion passes. Public hearings and bids. Public hearing for the purpose of consideration adoption of plan modification 00, or 00, to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number 10 for the property located at 1335 Ella Street.
Yes, so this redevelopment agreement, as it states, is for 1335 Ella Street. As you guys recall, we designated this area as Blighton Substandard for Russell's Market. It's about a two-block section in there that we did, oh, maybe about a year ago now. The Johnsons own a house directly to the west of this house. They are looking to purchase this house and make renovations to it. Ultimately, it ends up probably being a rental property is what they're looking at, I believe, on the short-term future. The projected value, or the base valuation of the house is $22,815. The projected valuation when they're complete is $149,000. That number was derived from the county assessor's office. We had them go directly up to the county assessor, talk about what it would take, and when they got that property done. And based upon those numbers, the present value of the TIF funds that would be available is about $26,700. Most, all of those funds will go towards the purchase price. I believe the purchase price is $29,000.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand?
Yeah, twenty-seven.
So, purchase price will be, take up most of these TIF funds that are available for them. They could have done micro-TIF. It was the one that qualified to go through micro-TIF. We looked at that as an option for them. The city council has previously approved the use of micro-TIF. The big difference was five years. If you do TIF through all these meetings, you get five additional years. You do micro-TIF, you get capped at 10 years. And so that's why we're going through this. It's been the CRA twice. They've recommended approval both times. It's been to planning and zoning, they recommend approval. It goes to this body now, and assuming you recommend approval, we'll look to the next CRA meeting to sign the redevelopment agreement and start this project.
Okay. Council, discussion? From the public? Seeing none. Mr. McLean?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:14 PM.
Second. Your vote, please. Motion passes. We'll move on to items under number four, resolutions. Resolution number 6975, adopting plan modification 00 to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area 10.
I move that resolution number 6975 be passed and adopted.
Second. Further discussion? From the public? Your vote, please. And that motion passes. Next item under B, under resolutions, resolution number 6976, reappointing various official, city officials.
I may the resolution number 6976 be passed and adopted.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, since, you know, I'm new to this, I've looked through here, and I have a couple of questions here, you know, just trying to get myself familiar here, but I'll start off at the top of it where we're appointing Tobias, you know, as city administrator. And my question is, is this just, you know, saying he's going to be our city administrator till his contract is up, and, which I think is in May, or are we appointing him for a full year?
The term of those offices all run concurrent with the term of the mayor, and so you'd be appointing for that term. But my contract, obviously, I have a contract, and so, yes, assuming you give those positions in my contract, it could be terminated once my contract comes up.
Okay. You know, I just was, you know, wondering about that. Then, also, just going down the list here, and don't, you know, mean to pick on you here at all, but I noticed that we're sitting there, and we have a city treasurer, deputy city attorney, but it doesn't say anything about BPW manager in this.
That point, that position is appointed by the BPW board.
Okay, all right. The city treasurer, I mean, have you done this before, or is this something new?
It's the same that's been since the entire time that I've held this position. It was that way when Needfelt held the position. It's been that way since Jim Bauer held the position.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the deputy city attorney, excuse me, I'm chuckling about this because you're, you're the city attorney's boss, but if you're a deputy city attorney, wouldn't he be your boss?
So the reason we put down deputy city attorney is just in the event that Mr. Rivera's not available, I can go up and cover court sometime.
Because you are, you are licensed.
Licensed licensed attorney, yes.
Okay, all right. I guess then, just going down through, you know, I was looking at some of these other things. Also, you know, I know, isn't Robert resigning here at the end of the month?
Correct. Mr. Marrow has submitted his resignation, and his last day will be probably December 30th.
Okay. Isn't these, doesn't this go, I mean, basically, this goes into effect this, at the end of the month?
Correct. No, it doesn't affect immediately.
It goes into effect immediately, so, okay. All right, that answered that question. Thank you. And then I guess the other things was, we didn't have any mention in these about some of the other department heads, like Pat and Steve, you know, are they not?
The electric superintendent, the water superintendent, the street superintendent, and the WPC superintendent are all appointed by the general manager of the Board of Public Works.
Okay, all right. Okay. Well, I guess that's really all I, you know, when I looked at this, you pretty much answered. I got a lot more questions here, but you basically answered them. Thank you very much. No more questions.
Anyone else? From the public? And before we vote, I think Mayor Worth did a wonderful job of explaining how dedicated our, our department heads are. And there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes, and I really believe that they support us, and we're certainly here to support them. So I just, I'll just let you know, they put in a lot of extra time, and they do a wonderful job for the city of Beatrice, and I'm very proud to know each and every one of them. You have a motion on the floor? You ready for a vote? Yep. And your vote, please. And that passes 6-0. Item C, resolution number 6977, adopting the revision, or the revised Nebraska Department of Transportation's NDOT state functional classification map as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
I move the resolution number 6977 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So this process started when we started our access management policy back in about 2020. As part of that policy, we had in there to, we retained JEO to do, to update that policy for us. In there was to reclassify some of our streets. In the old days, federal funding was tied to street classifications. That system has been gone now for about a decade, and so it's time for us to update our classifications. Engineer James Burrows is here to kind of walk us through some of the different streets we're looking at here. You know, you've got a map in there. We'll try to pull it up here. But really, they're kind of what we're looking at here when you look at classifications is traffic counts. You're also looking at the flow of traffic. So some of it's quantitative, some is qualitative, and you kind of put that all together and come up with some different classifications here.
I don't know if I'm gonna go see it.
It was a little difficult.
So, real quick, when we're talking roadway classifications, I guess the reason it's important is, for example, in the city of Beatrice, some of the classifications that, that we deal with are roads that are classified as expressway. Okay, what is that? For example, Highway 77 north of Dorsey Street, where it's a divided roadway, that's classified as an expressway. Highway 77 and Highway 4 and Highway 136 are considered a major arterial. And then stepping down in those classifications, we have minor arterials, and then we have collectors, and then ultimately, we get down to your local streets. So the reason those are important is, anytime we have a road and how it is classified dictates how I'm required to design it. And this is a book that is set up by the public, or the Board of Public Road Classifications and its standards. So based on the road, how it is classified, if it's an arterial, if the lanes have to be so wide, there has to be certain design standards in terms of allowable slope and things of that nature. And so this is kind of the Bible that I have to follow based on these classifications. So, and ultimately, too, the reason these classifications are important, we're trying to set up the city of Beatrice for growth, meaning that, for example, let's, I'm gonna use Hoyt Street as an example, let's say east of 19th Street. We know someday, as Beatrice grows, that could be a major roadway for us. Well, we don't want to design that and keep it a two-lane asphalt road all of its life. Let's say if we had a boom in development, we want to classify that road correctly based on how we feel it's going to be used, which could be an arterial roadway, which set up how wide the road has to be, turn lanes and things of that nature. But more importantly, it sets up, how do you access that roadway? And what I mean by that is like Lincoln Street, for example, a lot of traffic, right? And what we're dealing with right now is you have drives every 50 feet. Well, it's kind of a nightmare in terms of access and safety in terms of people on that roadway. So Hoyt Street, as it would develop, let's say, we'd want access points along Hoyt Street, let's say every quarter mile, and then you go into a collector, what takes you into the development, and then you go to your local roads. So that's ultimately how we're trying to set up the city of Beatrice. So, and that's why during the access management guide, this was brought up in terms of how do we want our roadway set up for the classification system. I'd say it's the big, there was not a lot of changes made, we just had some minor changes that were made. And what we're trying to follow is the state classification. And as I said in the board meeting, we have a national classification system, we have a state classification system. And you would think both of those would match in terms of how they classify those roads. They don't. And everybody asked me, why or why don't they? And I don't have an answer for you. I don't know. But we follow the state classification system. So probably one of the main things that we are changing is, for some reason, in the past, they had like 16th and 13th Street both as arterial streets through the city of Beatrice. They also had 7th and 8th Street, which are oneways, and Market and Ella as a, as an arterial or a collector road. We pulled those off. We felt like those more function as local roadways than they do arterials. And we can design, and that's the other thing, I guess, I want to make everybody understand is, even if a road is classified, let's say as a local road, if we deem that traffic is going to increase, we can still design it to a higher standard. You just can't design a roadway to a lower standard. So if that makes sense to everybody, so. But, you know, one of the main things is, we want to divide the roadway up into segments. As you're coming down from arterial, you go to a minor arterial, go to collector, and then you go to a local. And that's how basically we set up the grid system. And I don't think I'm gonna go to...
You'll just have to move it up, I think, on your end. If you just...
This is not gonna be... So, for example, 16th Street, and then you see 7th and 8th are no longer on here, Market and Ella are on, no, on here. We tried to divide the city up into grid-type system. The red line indicates an arterial street or a major arterial. The green lines are our other arterials, and then ultimately, you step down into the green, which is your collector street. I'm sorry, the purple is the collector streets. So as you can see, Lincoln, 19th Street, Dorsey Street, and all those, we're trying to set up a grid-type system as they feed into the minor locals. There was a couple of things that we tried to do also is to make sure our roads are matching up with the county roads. If the county has a major arterial, or if the county has a collector street, that we're matching up with those designation as well, because those ultimately dictate the traffic that's coming into town. So I guess I'm here to answer any questions. I know that's kind of a really broad paintbrush on what we're trying to do here, but JEO looked at it, made determinations. We didn't make a lot, we just made a few. So if there's anything specific I can answer, I will do that now, but ultimately, that's what we did.
How's this gonna affect if we get the downtown street rerouted? How's that gonna affect that? I mean, are the roads already the right classification, or?
Right. What do we have to do? So if that was the case, then Highway 136 would be rerouted, and then, yeah, ultimately, that classification, we would just redesignate that as a different classification, we'd go to that design standard. And then we could change where the existing roadway is at now to, let's say, more of a collector or a local road at that time.
So you can change the classification anytime, or do you have to do it in a specific?
No, it's a long process. Like Tobias says, this was a two-year process, just doing these few that we have done. But internally, we can, like I said, we can up the design standard of a roadway, we just can't go down. And we'd work with the state on that. So I have a feeling that if we need to reclassify that when the state's on board, it would go a lot quicker.
Hey, James. So the determining, the classification of the street, does that have any connection with money that we can get to help us improve it?
Not anymore. No. In the old days, that was the system that was there. You could only spend federal dollars on certain classifications. That system has been gone now, like I said, for probably 10 or 12 years now.
And Lincoln Street's classified how?
What's that?
Lincoln Street is classified how?
Lincoln Street, right now, we have as a green, which would be?
Other.
An other arterial. So, and that sets up all the way out to 33rd, and then down on 33rd. So you try to make your, best way I can explain it is you have your major arterials, you're trying to make your other arterials connect to those, and then you try to, when you step down in the classification of collector, you try to make sure collectors are attaching to your other arterials, and then inside of those, you step down further. So that's how we try to make sure there's a constant loop of those roadway classifications.
When you have your highest, your arterials, is there any state regulation that says what type of materials those arterials have to be and down the line?
Yes.
So Lincoln is an arterial, it has to be concrete, or?
They don't get, it has to be hard-surfaced, it doesn't get down to the fact, because, for example, the interstate, right? That's not curbed, but it has asphalt or concrete. So you're allowed to choose those surfaces, but you can't use an aggregate surface on one of those roadways.
Any questions? Other questions from the council? From the public?
Just one real good thing. You guys mentioned the truck routes downtown. It looks to me like your arterial, you have it on South 3rd Street, but the truck route starts on South 2nd Street, on the south part of that route. I don't know if that makes a difference on your map.
Yeah, we got it over here on 2nd, right here.
Okay, is that 2nd? I thought the 2nd was the, the green one just below.
Well, you're, yeah, you're correct. I mean, actually, yeah, this is 2nd here. Yeah, you'd be correct. This is 3rd, this is 3rd right here. Yes, you're correct. We're gonna get into weeds on that a little bit when we start looking at the oneways, but right now, we just want to make sure that was a constant loop there, they were attached.
Yeah, it's just South, South 3rd is not.
Right, right, right.
Which oneways are you looking at?
Later on, we have a committee that's evaluating those, and then I think at a later time, we're gonna come in front of the council and have a further discussion on that.
Good, I'd like to be on that committee.
You're not going anywhere, right, James?
Not as far as I know.
Okay. Any other questions? Your vote, please. Resolution number 69...
collector or a local road at that time.
So, you can change the classification anytime, or do you have to do it in a specific?
No, it's a long process, like Tobias says. This was a two-year process, just doing these few that we have done. But internally, we can, like I said, we can up the design standard of a roadway, we just can't go down. And we'd work with the state on that, so I have a feeling that if we need to reclassify that when the state's on board, it would go a lot quicker.
Hey, James, so the determining, the classification of a street, does that have any connection with money that we can get to help us improve it?
Not anymore. No. In the old days, that was the system that was there, you could only spend federal dollars on certain classifications. That system has been gone, now, like I said, for probably ten or twelve years now.
And Lincoln Street's classified how?
What's that?
Lincoln Street is classified how?
Lincoln Street, right now, we have as a green, which would be...
Other.
An other arterial. So, and that steps up all the way out to Thirty-third, and then down on Thirty-third. So, you try to make your, best way I can explain it is, you have your major arterials, you try to make your other arterials connect to those, and then you try to, when you step down in the classification of collector, you try to make sure collectors are attaching to your other arterials, and then inside of those, you step down further. So, that's how we try to make sure there's a constant loop of those roadway classifications.
When you have your highest, your arterials, is there any state regulation that says what type of materials those arterials have to be, and, and down the line?
Yes.
So, Lincoln is an arterial, it has to be concrete, or?
They don't get as, it has to be hard-surfaced, it doesn't get down into the fact, because, for example, the interstate, right? That's not curbed, but it has asphalt or concrete. So, you're allowed to choose those surfaces, but you can't use an aggregate surface on one of those roadways.
Any questions, other questions from the council? From the public?
Just one real quick thing. You guys mentioned the truck routes downtown. It looks to me like your arterials have it on South Third Street, but the truck route starts on South Second Street, on the south part of that. I don't know if that makes a difference on your map.
Yeah, we got it over here on Second, right here.
Okay, is that Second? I thought the Second was the, the green one just.
Well, you're, yeah, you're correct. I mean, actually, yeah, this is Second here. Yeah, you'd be correct. You, this is Third, this is Third right here, yes, you're correct. We're gonna get into weeds on that a little bit when we start looking at the oneways, but right now, we just want to make sure that was a constant loop there, they were attached.
Yeah, it's just South, South Third is not.
Right, right, right.
Which oneways are you looking at?
Later on, we have a committee that's evaluating those, and then I think at a later time, we're gonna come in front of the council and just have a further discussion on that.
Good, I'd like to be on that committee.
You're not going anywhere, right, James?
Not as far as I know.
Any other questions? Your vote, please. Resolution number six-nine-seven-seven has been adopted. Resolution number sixty-nine seventy-eight, executing the First Amendment to the contract for sale of real estate between the city and Kurt Hagermeyer.
I move that resolution number sixty-nine seventy-eight be passed and adopted.
I'll second it.
Yeah, so, in March of this year, you guys approved a contract to sell thirteen-on-one North Ninth Street to Mama Bear Dins, also, which is Kurt Hagerman. He bought that for two thousand dollars at closing. The contract called for an additional payment of eight thousand dollars on December first of this year, unless he had a house built. And they had in their specifications, the size and all that stuff. He is undergoing a house build right now. If you've been down there, you've got to see a house that's going up. He's asked for a ninety-day extension. It's about ninety days. It gets him through the end of February, it's February twenty-eighth, so it ends up being about eighty-eight days or something, just a little short. He's got the framing done, he's got most, quite a bit of the work done, he's waiting on an electrician last time I talked to him, so that's why he's asking for the extension. The collateral stays in place, you retain all those things, you still retain the right that if he doesn't have it done by February twenty-eighth, that you could force the additional payment of eight thousand dollars. The only thing it does is push back that due date.
Discussion, yes.
At some point, if it's not, then we're gonna have to do something. We can't, we're just not gonna keep, continue to do this, are we?
No, I wouldn't anticipate it. I would anticipate that this would be the one you bring back, and assuming you guys approve it tonight, that I wouldn't think you'd get a second one, but ultimately, it would be your guys' decision.
And just to note, too, on other projects, too, electricians have been pushed out till probably January to get down here, too, so it's pretty average for a lot of the other projects going on.
From the public? Your vote, please. Resolution number sixty-nine seventy-eight has been passed and adopted. There are no ordinances tonight. Public forum, the purpose for the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the council at this time. Anyone here for the public forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to discussions and reports. And just a heads up, the, the second item on the agenda was a discussion regarding one-way streets. Councilman Fairbanks has been working on that project. He is not here tonight due to an emergency, so we'll put that off until the January meeting. Now, next one is council organization, and I've just wrote down a few thoughts. I will tell you, I'm not as eloquent as our past mayor, and I don't quite have the radio voice, so bear with me. I just want to take a few minutes, first of all, to say thank you to all the councilmen, and congratulations to those that are new. We really appreciate it, and I know it's gonna be a great four years. I thought as we talk, look, take a look at this, at the city council and start, how do we want to roll out the city council for the next four years, here are some of my basic thoughts. I believe communication and customer service is important to each ward, and encourage the two in each ward to build a strong working relationship and work together as a team for your ward. I also believe in solving issues in a ward to be done at the lowest level. To that end, I will encourage someone with a challenge to start with their council representative of their ward. As agendas are prepared, I want to make sure that we have input from the council ward teams. Therefore, each Thursday before the Monday council meeting, one person from each ward is invited to meet with Tobias and I as we set the agenda for the next meeting. The decision to attend is decided by the, a conversation between the two members of the ward, and please let me know who will be attending. The agenda meeting for December nineteenth is Thursday, December fifteenth, at one P.M. These dates and times can be changed, but in order we meet the quorum, it can only be one representative from each ward, so I just let you know upfront how the agendas are gonna be set. Another thing that I've noticed is, we all have a beatrice.gov email. I think the use of the emails have been hit and miss. I don't think we get a lot of emails, I hope that improves. But if you're not checking your Nebraska, your, your Beatrice.gov email, and you really would like your regular email, the one that you check the most beyond there, let us know, because what we really want is to make sure that that email is checked. I, myself, I'm gonna use the beatrice.gov email. One of the things that I think is important, that I have everything there, and if there's ever a public records request, we know that they're gonna go right to the Nebraska, Beatrice .gov email. So, I'm gonna separate my Beatrice, my, my city email from my, my, my personal email, and keep those two separate just for that reason. I guess it's my hope that we can move Beatrice forward in a teamwork environment, and I'm excited for the next four years. I think we've done a lot of great things in the last four, the last eight years. To get the council thinking about the future, we will have a work session in January, and it is going to be a planning meeting where we're gonna take, give the opportunity for the council representatives to have some input in maybe what goals we would like to see this council accomplish. And we're going to use the timelines that kind of coincide with the biennium, or by, our biannual budget. So, in other words, I'll be asking for goals that we can do from January to September thirty, because our new year starts in October. And then there'll be an opportunity for goals from years two and three, which will be the next biannual, and then we'll go from four to seven. And I just think for the fun of it, I think we'll also have the last category be pie in the sky. Now, we know everything is associated to what we can afford and not afford, but this will at least help us, and will help Tobias and, and all the department heads kind of focus around what the city council is thinking. So, I think that's a great way to at least get us started off thinking about how we can continue to improve. I, I really look forward to the next four years. I think we got some great adventures ahead. We got some big things to do. When you look at Lincoln Street, you look at our, our landfill, I mean, we've got a number of projects that are gonna really need a lot of work, but I think we're all up to the challenge. That's why we ran. And so, with that said, I'm sure I'll take any questions anybody has for me right now.
You don't have a date for that January thing yet, do you?
Uh, I think, yeah, hold on just a second.
Bob, I like the idea with the teamwork that, especially me and Dwayne will engage in, but one thing I did learn in the last two years, and I was invited to most of those Thursday meetings, and I appreciated it, but there's some things that we have talked about, and I've been told that that's not kosher, but it is, because, it's legal, so we all know that. But if the two, I call as team members from each ward, don't really communicate, there's things that get discussed there that the other person don't ever know about, or we might forget about it. I would suggest, whenever it's his turn, or my turn, or anybody else's on here, that we take, start, we haven't, but start taking some notes, so we inform each other what happened on the opposite meetings. And if one of us can't be there, I know Dwayne and I won't have any trouble saying, you go, or you go, if somebody can't make it, so.
Yeah, I, I think that's part of the teamwork, yeah.
Well, and as you well know, Gary, too, like, if you ever can't make a meeting and you wanted to make those up, too, you can always come in anytime in the office.
I already do that.
I was gonna say, you especially have been good about that, so.
Every week, sometimes, two or three times.
Absolutely, so that's, that's an option to everyone as well, so.
I know.
I just want to congratulate you on doing that planning meeting, Bob, you know how I feel about that. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate that.
Well, you know, I think if you fail the plan, you're gonna fail, so we have to keep forward, and hopefully, this will help us. It'll help us all, oh, and by the way, when we do that, I will probably type something out, so it's a lot easier to just fill it in. But I think those will be sent, hopefully, maybe directly to Tobias or to Aaron. When we compile the list and bring it, there'll be no names associated to it. I think that's the best way to do it, so we don't know who submitted the ideas, but I think that's a great way, then we can kind of decide what can we pick off and chew on, and what we can't, so.
I just gave him my resignation from the council, no, from, from those two committees I'm on, so you'll need to jump on that sometime, okay?
Yep. And, you know, that's probably a, a great segue to say to the public, you know, from time to time, there needs to be new appointments on a number of, of committees in, in, in the city of Beatrice. Please send me an email if you are interested. I mean, sometimes, it can be a challenge to find somebody who's willing to commit the time, and we need some really good bodies, so as, as committee appointments come up, if you guys are interested, send me an email, and I'll start a list of possible people that we can fill those openings with. Anything else? Anything from the public? The next regularly scheduled city council meeting is December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven P.M. in the BPS Administrative Building here in this boardroom. And with the holiday season, there will not be a work session on December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. McLean?
I move that the meeting be adjourned at seven forty P.M.
Second.
Your vote, please. We are adjourned.